Thank you. Our next speaker will be Speaker 56, please, Christopher Ball, followed by Speaker 49, Brunetta Hill Corley, followed by Speaker 50, Bonnie Jones, and then 51, Valencia Rios Winston, please.
I'm Chris Ball. I'm also here to speak about the calendar. Contrary to what --
Just walk in. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Could you move that up?
Also here to speak about the calendar. It's working, yeah. Speaking about the calendar. I was contacted at one point to take part in a focus group that was going to be held less than of 48 hours before, in the time that I was contacted. So it seemed a little odd to me that if you're trying to reach out to parents and get them to give their input in on the calendar, that you would give us a little bit more than two days' advance warning that the focus group was taking place. I was also puzzled by the fact that we've not received any of the survey information that was collected. One parent provided me with some numbers, but according to her and the sheet she showed me said that when they were meeting on last Friday, that the numbers were dated as of 9/1/2014. So I'm unclear how they could have had all of the information in from the survey to make a decision to debate the calendar on 11/1/2014, when the data was only as of 9/1/2014. Many parents also told me, and I agree with them, that the questions were very hard to understand. Why did we have, what were the dates going to be on these intercessions? What did it mean to start in mid-August versus late August? And also, in the breakdown, the students' responses are merged with the apparent responses. We also don't have cross tabs on, were track E. parents more interested in the August start date versus track R. parents? All of this data should be there. We just don't have access to it.
Mr. Ball, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so if this is the way you're going to go about contacting people for input into things, this is not going to help build the trust with the parents in the system. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Valencia Rios. She will be followed by Speaker 54, Pavlyn Jakov, followed by Speaker 55, Glora Hanna, then Daniel Marquez, Speaker 58, and then, Mr. President, that would conclude the public participation list.
Good afternoon. I'm Pavlyn Jakov. I'm with the Chicago Teachers Union. Eleven months ago, the board voted to turn around eight elementary schools and close down four, based nearly entirely on the ISAT performance. Yet in 2011, the new school progress reports focused on the NWEA and Scantron assessments. The administration all but repudiated the ISAT, citing a new focus on metrics that supposedly better measure college readiness. So last year, high-stakes decisions created upheaval in over a dozen schools were approved based on a measure that even the district had little confidence in. Pablo Casals Elementary was selected for turnaround, presumably because it had low growth in ISAT in 2011. Yet in 2012, they doubled their score on the performance policy, were well organized for improvement according to CCSR survey data, and their most recent progress report card shows that last year's student growth was above average on the Scantron. This is all in the year prior to when over 90 percent of the staff were fired and primarily replaced by first-year teachers. Another school from last year, Walter Reed Elementary, was closed for low performance despite similar contradictory evidence. The CCSR survey found that in both 2011 and 2012, Reed had a supportive environment and ambitious instruction. Going by those measures, the administration could have just as reasonably concluded that Reed be expanded, building on the successes the staff had made and cohered in their small school setting. Were these schools on the rise? Would these schools be saved this year? Standardized tests, whether it be NWEA, MAP, Scantron, or the ISAT assessments, are not tools for improving schools, nor are they even tools for reliably identifying schools that are improving. I bring these examples up because the new administration has indicated that there will be more turnarounds this year, in addition to the hundreds of closings and consolidations
Mr. Jakov, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
That neighborhood schools are now threatened with. The administration can do far better by these communities by identifying which of the conditions of success these schools need the most support in, and ensuring they receive targeted resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jakov.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Got it. Got it.
Mr. President, our last speaker then will be Daniel Marquez, Speaker 58.
Thank you, Ms. Bill Tron. Ms. Tron, can you take this box and put these in his hands? Good morning. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Marquez, and I'm the president and CEO of Aztec Supply Corporation, a janitorial supply company located in Bedford Park, or as I call it, Bedford Falls, a sleepy bedroom community located just outside the city of Chicago. Aztec has been a supplier of janitorial products since 1992, when Aztec was founded. I have provided all of your historical fact sheet about our company. Actually, I have them here, if you'd like to read them. By the way, congratulations, Dr. Bennett, and welcome to Chicago. You've reached the mountaintop here. I want to also congratulate, thank Jesse Ruiz, who, a few months ago, at a board meeting stuck up for Aztec Supply when we were mistakenly accused of being another company that had had some serious issues for them. Also, I want to welcome my good friend Carlos Escocia to the board. An awesome responsibility, Carlos. I'm just glad you're not a principal anymore, where you have to be in charge of the custodians in the schools. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Aztec has been a supplier, as I said. I have provided all of your historical fact sheet, and I hope that you have time to read it sometime today. I'm born and raised in the city of Chicago. My mother and father were also born here. We're Mexican-American descent, and we were raised in the back of the yards. Our family has been a family of service to the city of Chicago. My father retired as a plumbing inspector for the city 15 years ago. My mother, my late mother passed away. Before that, she was a clerk at the Sewer School and retired from there. However, our family has also made the ultimate sacrifice with the death of my brother, former police officer who was killed in line of duty 10 years ago. We're fortunate and grateful for the fact that the UN organization decided to name a school after him, the Donald J. Marquez Charter School, located on 47th Street.
Mr. Marquez, excuse me. Mr. Marquez, can you please conclude?
However, I'm here to protest the invitation to bid for janitorial supplies, which is on the board's agenda today. This bid proposal, if it is allowed to be awarded today, would decimate Aztec Supplies' business that it currently has with CPS by being a strategic source vendor. The Department of Purchasing decided to implement an online reverse e-auction bid for janitorial supplies. Although this bid procedure is often used in the private sector, it has never been done at CPS until this new administration took over. In fact, Cook County attempted the same type of bid procedure and decided not to use it in their bidding process for janitorial supplies. The way it works is that any company who has a vendor number with CPS can bid this contract, but instead of providing realistic specifications and allowing companies to provide a fixed price for each product, as they've done in the past, see the current contract, purchasing decided to resort to this reverse auction format. This bid procedure took place last month, and each participating vendor had to go online at an off-site location, in our case, our office, and bid by section electronically. The end result of this bid for each section allows CPS to get the lowest price possible, as vendors are pitted against each other and are bidding during a set time period for each section. Consequently, it provides CPS hypothetically
Mr. Marquez.
Of course, savings of great magnitude.
Mr. Marquez.
At what cost does this method provide CPS its opportunity to lower prices for janitorial supplies? I'd like a few more minutes if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez.
We believe that the proposed cost saves will be more than offset by the inferior products that many of the proposed awards
Mr. Marquez, excuse me, but you have exceeded your time.
We're already seeing a rapid deterioration of the schools' physical indoor appearance, and I'd like to provide this statement to you, so you can read this.
Thank you. Mr. President, that now concludes public participation.
I would invite any board members who have any reactions to anything they heard at public participation to respond at this moment.
Just maybe to ask a clarification, and somebody had raised, and James, I don't know if you can do this on the spot, but, or if you even know, regarding, and I have no idea if that's the case or not, the minutes that were moved from the website. And frankly, I know that this board, since we've been here in May 2011, have gone to great strains about being very transparent and very compliant with the law in terms of releasing our minutes, including closed session minutes, that frankly hadn't been done in the past, so, or whoever it was who asked about that. It was George, that's right. I think we're doing a pretty good job in that regard.
I am not aware that the minutes were removed from the website, and I'll follow up.
Well, it's been late, and I hate to prolong it, but since you replied to something of Mr. Schmidt, he said something which was completely tendentious, when he said that there was a, in the past, budgets had shown deficits which were not real. What's happened, and I've been only on the board since the new mayor, is that reserves have been used from time to time to cover deficits, and people go and find reserves. The reserves are gone. The deficit is unfortunately as real as it could be, and I just wouldn't let it hang out there, that somehow this is a cooked-up billion-dollar deficit, if only it were.
I have some questions on the public agenda, so I, as opposed to the
Let me just finish. Public comment? I want to make comments on a couple of things that relate to schools, both Jones and Lincoln. I've been personally involved in a number of meetings over the last year, two years, in both of these situations, and I have met with public officials and community representatives, as well as school leaders, on both of these issues. And I want to say on both issues, the stories that were put forth today were not accurate nor complete. And that, on the Jones situation, we've made it perfectly clear that the demand for selective enrollment seats is large, and the number of children qualified for those seats across the city is significant, and this is an opportunity to meet that demand, and it was a very conscious decision to go ahead and do that. At the same time, the plan that was put forth was frankly a plan that I discussed with some of the people who were in this room today, approximately a year ago, to provide 300 seats with a neighborhood preference, to deal with the demand in the neighborhood from neighborhood students. And at that time, the people in that room said this is a good solution. And so it's a solution that, in fact, has been discussed and planned. And if you look at the data, it is a solution that should satisfy the number of students in the neighborhood. So I don't want to let pass that we have ignored that neighborhood and its needs for high school seats, or that, in fact, we have ignored the significant demand we have for high-quality seats for children who are eligible, because the demand is great. On Lincoln School, for somebody to say that this district has not made proposals for long-term solutions to the Lincoln situation is absolutely false. I've been in the room when they've been presented, presented to leadership of that community, political leadership of that community. The challenge, it is a challenge. We have an overcrowding problem there. We've presented several solutions to that community. The community itself is not collectively around a single solution. So when somebody comes and says they've been ignored, and this, and that, and so forth, that's one point of view that's not fully informed, and I just want to correct the record on both of those situations.
Dave, on both of those, I think it would be helpful just to get an update, you know, on, I know you just gave one, but to know what the most recent offer were, you know, where we stand on Lincoln and on the Center City proposal, just to get the actual numbers and what their neighborhood school is. I think I know, but it would just be, I haven't seen it on paper in well over a year.
I'll provide you the student analysis that I personally went through and frankly shared with them about the number of students
I know we had done it, and we saw it a while ago.
And where they're going to school.
I just couldn't, I was sitting here trying to remember it, and of course, I can never find those papers, so I know we haven't.
Those 300 seats will more than satisfy the demand from that community.
Yeah, that was my recollection.
Yes. Okay. Now, questions on open agenda items before we go into closed session?
I have one regarding that. You know, we have two charter school proposals on our agenda today, and I know they have been deferred from the past. In addition, there are some conditions. My question would be, what is the alignment here to the commission's recommendations, to their connection to neighborhood schools, as well as the participation of that community in the new school in that particular area?
Do you want to respond to that, Barbara?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure of the question. What was raised at the last board meeting and why we deferred the decision was to set the conditions to each of the charter, the CMOs. And I think that after a meeting yesterday, we had pretty lengthy meetings with board member Zoff and I, with those representatives, and they are to identify as a part of the conditions, the community that is not only in need, but the community that is open and willing to support the charter school. So they have a lengthy document from us that specifies all of the conditions, and should the conditions not be met, we won't authorize. I would recommend to this board we would not authorize. But they have almost a year to meet all of the conditions, because the opening is scheduled for 2014.
As we consider closing schools, are we taking a look at, you know, in overcrowded neighborhoods and exploring this as this possibility, or is this something we're looking
We have directed them, but we're not directing their decision. We have directed them to where the need exists, but our policy, and I've said to our staff, is we should not be defining for the CMOs where, but we've directed them to the communities we think are in need. And actually, one of the CMOs, and help me to, I think they had six communities, there were six communities they were considering, or more even, and we were, we recommended to them that they narrow their scope so that they could bring to us something to which we could respond.
Thank you.
Can I just, on that topic, I don't know, Jesse, are you on this topic?
Different topic.
Okay, yeah, so on, since we're on this topic, I have a question. I don't understand the, and this is really, maybe James, I don't, I don't understand the conditional, if this is a conditional approval or an approval, because I understand that we're saying to them they have to come up with a site. My problem is, I still don't have any idea putting, I'm talking about Orange now for a minute. I still don't have any idea where that will be. And as you know, Barbara, we talked to them yesterday, they still have six. And so, you know, if we approve it today, and they find a site, do I get to vote again, or does, do I have to, and I don't agree with the site, or I don't think it's a site that's in need. That's, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned, as you know, Barbara, Orange does not have a, doesn't even have a principal yet. They're working on a model that is not proven, and so even if they do those things, so I'm concerned about voting in the abstract saying, and between now and next fall, fall of 2014, you have to approve them. So I'm trying to understand, James, what's the approval we're giving them?
What you would be approving would be their proposal, their conceptual model and philosophy. The address is, would be a material modification. They cannot have final approval without an address. So if they do not have an address or location, right now
But if they have an address and location, if they come in with an address and location, we don't get to change the authorization, right?
If they change it, that is a material modification. They would have to bring it back to you.
Okay, I don't understand. Say, try again. I'm still not following you.
So if they have an address now
They don't have an address now. That we're saying you have to get an address. So between now and 2014, they get an address?
Yes.
Okay, but I don't have any say on the address.
You do, because between now and 2014, once they get an address, you have to approve of that.
I have to approve, we have to approve the address?
Yes.
Okay. But, but, and then what about the substance of the school? The, if we authorize them, we're, what I'm concerned about is, once we authorize, we're authorizing. They're not ready today, from my perspective, and what we're saying is, we're going to authorize you on the idea that you're going to get ready. And is that what we're doing?
You are authorized in the concept, however, they cannot open until the package is complete, which would include an address. So you have the ability, right now, well, even after acting today, unless they come back with an address, they cannot open.
Okay. My problem is, their, our guidelines, I thought, require us to have schools with proven track record, and that can be established in a variety of ways. So, you know, our conversation, for example, with foundations, they brought in a number of people that have, do have a proven track record, which Orange does not have, at least currently, other than one person on their board. So I'm trying to understand how we think they meet our criteria. And one of the other stipulations, and my understanding was that you would be approving conditionally, and the conditions for Orange are multiple, one of which is location, another, as I recall, and I don't have that document in front of me, Jack, but another condition is that they have a principal who has worked serving the, a similar population of students at the grade configuration K through 2, I believe it is, who has a track record. And they must bring that person forth and the documentation to substantiate their decision, upon which then the board would say yea or nay. I mean, it's totally in the board's hands, as I understand, from the legal department, whether or not you would make the final authorization. This is a conditional authorization based on the conditions that we've laid forth for each of the CMOs. Okay. Can we get a copy of the conditions document before we come back?
I have one comment on that. If we're now approving schools with conditions, we're not approving schools who are ready to go? Now we're going to approve them conditionally? Jane? Anybody? Because if, if two or three major criteria has not been met, why we Mahalia, it won't be the first time that we've done this. Well, it would be Okay. We have approved a number of schools in the past, not necessarily this board, but a prior board. Okay. And approved schools subject to location, for example. That is a condition. They would have to come back with a location. Others have been approved, you know, conditionally over time. Mm-hmm. So conditionality is not a new concept in our approval. But does that mean that's right? Because we've done it in the past. That's a different question. Okay, now I'm asked, okay. That's my second question. Are we now doing this? The answer is, we have done this in the past as a board, maybe not this board, but actually this board has done it. It has been done. Do you want to do it is a different question. Okay. But, you know, part of that is whether, in fact, within those sets of conditions, are you comfortable authorizing the management to make judgments that the conditions are met? Right. I mean, that's partly the issue that you're all raising. Do you trust the management to make the determinations about the conditionality, or do you want that conditionality to be brought back to the board?
I think, David, yeah, and I think, David, I just want to say, I don't think it's a management trust issue, and I think the challenge for, at least for me, I can't speak for Mahalia, is we're in a different environment, right? And so I'm supportive of creating quality seats in areas where we have need. We had somebody say that. Quality seats in areas we have need. My challenge is, not clear to me yet, that at least one of these two meets that criterion, and that's my problem.
I mean, it's okay. If you want to propose to bring the conditionality back to the board for ultimate approval, I'm sure we can do that, if that's what you'd like to do. Nobody's fighting you.
I know, I know.
I'm just trying to get clarity around what we're talking about.
Right, thank you.
President Vitale, members of the board, I've asked Jack Elsie, who now heads that office, to print the conditions that the management set forth with the CMO, based on the deferred vote last, at the last meeting. And clearly, if it's his board's pleasure, as management goes through the conditions to determine whether or not the CMO has met it, we'll bring it back to the board, and if the board, so it's its pleasure that they don't want to vote to move forward, we don't have a vested interest either, and we would clearly bring it back.
So I think you have an offer there to bring the conditionality back to the board, if you so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Jesse?
Different subject.
Okay.
And given that Tim is still standing, maybe I could call upon him to briefly address, you know, for some folks who may not be familiar with a reverse auction process, what exactly it is, how it's fair, and how it doesn't jeopardize, and again, you know, kind of addressing some of the critiques that Mr. Marquez made of the system, the process of how we're not jeopardizing quality and how we're not doing anything that's not fair in terms of trying to seek the best possible price, which in turn hopefully means we're helping chip away a little bit at that billion-dollar deficit, which is indeed a reality.
Yep, thanks for the opportunity. I was actually surprised by Mr. Marquez's comments for two reasons. One, he acknowledged that this would help us save money at a time when reducing costs on things like janitorial supplies is so crucial, because it allows us to keep money in the classroom, on teachers and materials for students that directly help their education. So we're guilty as charged of trying to drive costs lower without compromising quality. Secondly, Mr. Marquez's firm was a winner in the auction and did a terrific job and won one of the five winning pieces of business, and our projection would suggest that his business will stay very robust with CPS. So it surprises us that he's disgruntled. The process is imminently fair. As he says, anybody who can log on, who's got a vendor number, can come in and bid on materials that we do in lots, various things, in the janitorial supplies area. The firms all have to be qualified bidders. They are all encouraged to bid lower and lower, so it gets our costs lower, and we make sure that each vendor is capable of meeting our needs. So there's a vetting process following the winning bids to make sure that they can handle the scale and the quality of what we're looking for.
So it's not just lowest price. You got to come up
No, there is a, right, you couldn't just have Tim Colley start up a firm and start bidding and win business and then have to go figure out how to buy soft scrub from Clorox and resell it. So you really have to have credibility and be an approved supplier and have quality. And as he himself said, this isn't a revolutionary new approach. In the private sector, it's done all the time to get to the best price and the best quality that you can. So we're proud of the fact
I'm smiling, because they sure do that in legal services today, across the board. My clients do.
Yep. So we're very proud of the fact that we're bringing these kinds of approaches to purchasing all kinds of goods and services for CPS, so again, that we can reduce our costs on things like janitorial supplies and leave more money in the classroom, which is our real mission here. We got to have clean schools, but we have to have, we're here to educate kids.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about open agenda items? If not, Dr. Heinz, can I ask you for a motion?
I move for the passage of motion number 13-0123-MO1 and the commencement of a closed session to consider the subjects specified in the motion.
I section that with great enthusiasm.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will proceed with a, Dr. Escotia.
Yes.
Dr. Benin.
Pardon me, sir.
Roll call.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Zoff?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six, five, zero, nays. Thank you.
All right. The meeting of the Board of Education is reconvened. Madam Secretary, please proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will start with items from closed session, and I will begin with council retention. This item does not require a vote. Shesky and Frolic, Mr. President, this item just needs to be accepted by the board, please.
Madam Secretary, please mark, receive and file.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll continue with settlements and an award. These items do require a vote, and they are: First report, workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Maggie A. Bell, case number 10WC4084. The second report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Paul Holt, case number 09WC9175. The third report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Joseph V. Johnson, case number 05WC3321506WC17511, and 07WC18734. The fourth report is the workers' compensation, payment for lump-sum settlement for Natasha Richards, case number 09WC1014. The fifth report is the workers' compensation, collectible recovery of 5-B lien, Alana Williams, case number 09WC48904. The sixth report is the resolution by the Board of Education of the City of Chicago regarding the settlement of Chicago Teachers Union grievance number 10-08-140, brought on behalf of Andre Copeland, tenure teacher assigned to Avalon Park Elementary School. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. President Vitale, I will proceed with a roll call. Dr. Escotia?
Yes.
Dr. Benin?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board Member Zoff?
Yes.
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i, zero nays. I will continue with other matters, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, authorized payment of attorney's fees in the matter of VJ versus Board of Education of the City of Chicago, case number twelve C. nine nine one four. The second report, appoint senior assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Andrew M. Slobedine. Third report is appoint assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Mark J. Lubus. And the fourth report is appoint assistant general counsel, Department of Law, Deborah Divis. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with additional personnel items that fall under the purview of the chief executive officer, and they are: First report, adjust salary of chief community and family engagement officer, Philip Hampton. The second report is transfer and appoint chief of staff, Office of Strategic School Support Services, Stephanie Donovan. And the third report, principal contract C. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with a warning resolution. This item does require a vote, and it's Kenneth Hunter, principal, Charles Allen Prosser Career Academy High School. Mr. President, this item does require a vote.
If there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue with items from the board, and these items do require a vote, and they are: First report, resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss educational support personnel. The second report is the resolution approving the chief executive officer's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers. And for the record, Mr. President, I would like to note that on January tenth, twenty thirteen, the board members and the office of the board received the CEO's recommendation to dismiss probationary-appointed teachers pursuant to Boardo four dash seven B point two B and one oh five ILCS five slash thirty four dash eighty four. Her recommendation included the names of the teachers affected and the reasons. She also noted that the teachers affected will be notified of their dismissal after adoption of the resolution. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I believe now that Vice President Reese has a motion, please.
I do. I move that pursuant to section two point oh six D of the Open Meetings Act, board members have reviewed the redacted portions of closed session minutes for the period beginning July nineteen ninety five through December two thousand and four. These minutes were opened for public inspection on January twenty fifth, two thousand and twelve, with noted redactions described in Board Report twelve dash zero one two five dash MO four. The board finds the need for confidentiality does not exist for certain redactions where board records confirm a private or public release of information, while the need for confidentiality continues to exist for other redacted portions of these minutes. Upon adoption of this motion, all existing closed session minutes between July nineteen ninety five through December two thousand and four, with continuing redactions noted, will be available for public inspection.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i, zero nays. And I believe that Dr. Beenan has a motion, please.
I move that pursuant to section two point oh six D of the Open Meetings Act, the board members have reviewed the minutes of all closed session minutes for the period beginning January two thousand and five through June two thousand and eleven. The board members have determined that the need for confidentiality does not exist as to those minutes, except as indicated in the redacted portions of these minutes. Minutes were redacted for the following: privileged attorney-client communications, information subject to privacy or confidentiality protections in state or federal law, and information where the board determines necessary to protect the public interest or the privacy of an individual. The board finds that the need for confidentiality as to the redacted material remains. Upon adoption of this motion, all closed session minutes from January two thousand and five through June two thousand and eleven, with noted redactions, will be available for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Aye.
Six i, zero nays. And I believe Dr. Heinz has a motion, please.
Yes. I move that the board adopt the minutes of the closed session meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. Furthermore, pursuant to section eight, two point zero six D of the Open Meetings Act, board members have reviewed these minutes, along with previously approved minutes of closed sessions from July two thousand and eleven through November two thousand and twelve. Board members have determined the need for confidentiality exists as to all such closed session meetings, minutes. Therefore, closed session from July two thousand and eleven through December two thousand and twelve will be maintained as confidential and not available for public inspection.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Aye.
Six i, zero nays. And I believe that Dr. Ascoitia has a motion, please.
Pursuant to section two oh six C of the Open Meetings Act, permits the destruction of audio recordings of closed session meetings no less than eighteen months after the completion of a meeting. If the board has, number one, approve the minutes of the closed meeting; number two, approve the destruction. The board's closed session meetings from July twenty ten to June twenty eleven occurred more than eighteen months ago, and the board secretary maintains board-approved confidential minutes of all such closed sessions. Therefore, I move that the audio recordings maintained by the board secretary of the board's closed session meetings from July twenty ten until June twenty eleven, as itemized in the attached appendix A, be authorized for destruction in accordance with section two oh six C of the Open Meetings Act.
May I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Aye.
Six i, zero nays. And then I believe that board members up has a motion, please.
I move that the record of proceedings of the regular board meeting of December nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, prepared by the board secretary, be approved, and such record of proceedings be posted on the district's website in accordance with section two point oh six B of the Open Meetings Act.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Ascoitia?
Yes.
Dr. Beenan?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Heinz?
Yes.
Board members up?
Yes.
President Vitale?
Yes.
Six i, zero nays. Thank you. Mr. President, I will now continue with items on the public agenda and only read the board report numbers since the titles and board reports appeared on the public agenda. And I will begin with unfinished business from the December nineteen twenty twelve board meeting. And I would like to note for the record that the deferred actions from the December nineteen twenty twelve board meeting, under Board Report twelve dash twelve nineteen EX three, regarding proposals for foundations and Orange charter schools, would be addressed under Board Report thirteen dash zero one two three EX four, a little bit later on the agenda. So, I will now continue with the January twenty third, twenty thirteen, public agenda items, and I will begin with resolutions. These items do require a vote, and they are RS one, two, three, and four. Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will continue now with communications that need to be read into the record, and these items do not require a vote. CO one is the communication regarding the location of the board meeting for February twenty seventh, twenty thirteen. This is to advise that the regular meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty seventh, twenty thirteen, will be held at the Central Administration Building, Board Chamber, fifth floor. The board meeting will begin at ten thirty a.m. Please note that there is new process for public participation registration. Visit www.cpsboe.org for more information. Public participation guidelines are available for the February twenty seventh board meeting. And also, for the February twenty seventh, twenty thirteen board meeting, only advanced registration will be available. Registration for public participation will open on Monday, February eighteenth at eight a.m. and close on Friday, February twenty second at five p.m., or until all sixty speaking slots are filled. You can advance register during this registration period by the following methods: online, by phone, or in person. The public participation segment of the meeting will begin at the time indicated in the meeting agenda, and proceed for no more than the sixty registered speakers for the two hours. The second communication is CO two, and it's the communication, Ray, appointment of trustee to serve on the Public School Teachers Pension and Retirement Fund of Chicago for Dr. Carlos M. Ascoitia. And it reads, "To the members of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, I hereby appoint Dr. Carlos M. Ascoitia to serve as a trustee on the Public School Teachers Pension and Retirement Fund of Chicago to fill the unexpired term of Rodrigo A. Sierra. Dr. Ascoitia's term will commence January twenty thirteen and expire November twenty thirteen. Respectfully submitted, David J. Vitale, President." The third communication, CO three, is the communication from the chief financial officer concerning the comprehensive annual financial report of the board for fiscal year twenty twelve, and it reads, "The office of the chief financial officer has prepared the fiscal year twenty twelve comprehensive annual financial report. Pursuant to section thirty four dash twenty nine of the Illinois School Code, the board retained the independent certified accounting firm of McGladrey &amp; Pullen, L.L.P., to audit the basic financial statements of the board as of and for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. McGladrey &amp; Pullen, L.L.P. has completed the audit and issued an unqualified report on the basic financial statements, which is included in the comprehensive annual financial report. Copies of the comprehensive annual financial report have been distributed to the members of the board in advance of this meeting. Today, the comprehensive annual financial report is being presented to and accepted by the board, and it will be filed in the official records of the board and will be transmitted to the mayor of the City of Chicago and the Chicago City Council as required by law." Mr. President, I will continue with additional items on the public agenda that do require a vote, and they are: EX one, EX two. I would like to note, for the record, an abstention for Vice President Reese on EX two. And also note, for the record, a correction for EX two, and the final will be in the action. They corrected the number of seats, and also, the dollar amount was decreased for EX two. Moving on to EX three, and then on EX four, if I may, Mr. President, let me take the vote for EX one, EX two, and EX three, so that I may proceed with the deferred items as a separate vote for the next board report that follows, which is EX four. So, the board does need to vote at this time on EX one, two, and three.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstention.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the next item on the agenda, Mr. President, is, as indicated earlier, the deferred action items from the December nineteenth board meeting for the two charter schools for foundations in Orange. And I understand we will be taking a separate vote on those matters. To begin with, I'd like to note for the record that the actual board report that was on the agenda will be revised in terms of the appendix for foundations. The grade levels were noted as six to eight, and the correction should be grade levels six through twelve, so that the final would be included in the action. I'd also like to note, for the record, and read into the record, conditions for these two charter schools, beginning with foundations. The conditions for Foundations College Prep Charter School, number one, school will open with middle grades only in year one, and eventually grow to serve grades six through twelve. Principal, number two, principal must participate in a mentorship train slash training program with a focus on developing high school-level school leaders. Number three, board must expand to include members with demonstrated development, development fundraising capacity. And number four, twenty fourteen opening to allow for satisfaction of conditions. So, Mr. President, at this time, if we may take the vote on Foundations?
Madam, are we going to take a roll call, or no?
Your, it's at your pleasure, Mr. President, if you'd like to take a roll call vote or proceed with the last favorable.
All right. Then, Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now continue with the vote for the Orange Charter School. And I'd also like to note for the record the conditions for the Orange Charter School, and they are: Number one, a principal candidate must be identified who has verifiable and measurable leadership within elementary school population, similar to the children in our communities. Number two, the school's proposed budget must be revised with more realistic fundraising goals and/or identified means to secure funds, including current financial commitments. Number three, the school must choose a community to focus their location and be able to demonstrate clear need in that community from students, families, and community leaders. And number four, twenty fourteen opening to allow for satisfaction of conditions. And, Mr. President, at this time, if we may take the vote for the Orange Charter School, please.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with one additional item that requires a vote at this time, and that is EX five, please.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will continue with additional items that require a vote, and they are PR one. And for the record, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR one. Moving on to PR two, three, PR four. On PR five, I would like to note an abstention for the record for Vice President Reese, as well as Dr. Beenan on PR five. Moving on to PR six, PR seven. On PR eight, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR eight. Moving on to PR nine, I would like to note an abstention for Vice President Reese on PR nine. We move on to PR ten, eleven, twelve. And, Mr. President, these items do require a vote.
Madam Secretary, if there are no objections from my fellow board members, please apply the last favorable roll call vote with the noted abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will continue with items that do not require a vote, and they are ED one. And just to note that this is the board report for the academic calendar for the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year, and the board report is being revised to reflect the correct Thanksgiving dates, and the final will be in the action for ED one. The next item is ED two. Moving on to EX six, EX seven, and AR one. And, Mr. President, these items just need to be accepted by the board.
Please mark received and file.
Thank you, Mr. President, and there are no further items on the public agenda.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
We adjourn. Thank you all.